I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Public Safety to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, November 6, 2024. We have all of our Board of Safety members participating in person here at the City Hall Auditorium. And before we get into the regular agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge a flag? All right, item number one on the agenda, I'm apologizing, I'm coming down with a cold, so if I'm you know, ready for the holidays, right? So I need a motion to open the meeting to the public?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public, anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I'll move right into item two. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Battle. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stayed.
Abstained.
Okay, and for the record, I have two abstentions, that would be Commissioner Cogswell and Commissioner Tyler.
Young.
Thank you. Moving into item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept Officer Matthew Delagnes as a regular member of the Torrington Police Department after completing their probationary period effective October 11th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Cogswell, are there questions or comments?
Anything good?
So why don't we wrap up this motion? And then I'll do it as an add, okay? Any other questions, comments? I'm going to call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so as you heard, the chief, he does want to do a recognition. So if we could have a motion to add to the agenda. Is it?
It's at the top.
Right at the top.
It's not an actual number.
Oh, it is, it's in the middle here, like a title. Okay, all right. And I guess it isn't really an agenda item, it's just an opportunity to turn this over to you, so I won't do it as an add. Chief, do you want to take a moment?
Good evening, everybody. Over the last couple of months, we've been giving departmental awards that have been long overdue for members of our agency for doing some exceptional service that they've conducted during the performance of their duties. As a result of, because it has been taken a couple of months, some of the officers were not available for those other awards. But tonight, we have the honor of recognizing one of our detectives for one of the awards that we're going to be issuing. So if I can have Detective Madeline Jolamino come up here, please. Going to be issued a award this evening for exceptional duty. Deputy Chief Barone will explain what the exceptional duty award is.
The Exceptional Duty Medal is issued to an officer after a highly credible accomplishment which brings recognition to himself or herself, this department and the police profession as a result of training, devotion to duty, or service to the public.
On July 27th, 2021, the Torrington Police Department initiated an investigation of a reported sexual assault involving a juvenile victim. Detective Madeline Jolamino, who was assigned this investigation, made contact with the victim and her parents, and provided a safe environment for the victim to provide critical information about the incident's location and what had occurred, and continued to stay in contact with and provide support to the victim and her family. As the case moved forward, Detective Jolamino conducted an extensive investigation that consisted of several interviews, the reviewing of numerous medical records, surveillance videos, and social media messages. She also drafted multiple arrest warrants and search warrants. She drafted multiple search warrants, allowing her to ultimately gather enough physical evidence to positively identify a suspect responsible for the assault. As Detective Jolamino was continuing with her investigation and in preparing an arrest warrant for the suspect, U.S. Customs and Border Protection contacted Torrington Police to advise that the suspect involved with Detective Jolamino's case had been detained at the Vermont border crossing with Canada. Further information advised that this male suspect had a juvenile female in the victim with him who had been reported missing from Torrington the day before. As federal agents conducted their investigation into the incident at the U.S.-Canadian border, it was reported that the suspect had kidnapped the juvenile female and sexually assaulted her. Detective Jolamino was able to assist federal agents by completing additional search warrants and gathering additional physical evidence for the Torrington case and subsequent federal investigation. Detective Jolamino's initial investigation into the sexual assault case provided federal investigators with the ability to complete their investigation, which resulted in additional federal arrests that included kidnapping. Detective Jolamino is being commended for her professionalism, tenacity, and attention to detail, resulting in this multifaceted case which ended in a positive conclusion through the arrest of a dangerous individual, thus making our community safer. Detective Jolamino's performance is in the highest traditions of the Torrington Police Department and is therefore recognized in the issuance of this Exceptional Duty Award for a job well done. Nice job. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out to support Detective Jolamino and the Torrington Police Department. She, along with so many others, members of my department, do such an exceptional job day in and day out. And it's special nights like this that we get to recognize the significant accomplishments that they make, not only for the police department, but for our community and the city of Torrington. So once again, I want to thank Detective Jolamino for her fine work, she continues to do a great job. And I just want to recognize all of my officers for the great job that they do on a day-to-day basis. So thanks again, have a good night.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we can move into item four. So what I'm looking for is a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-200, Subsection 6, Subsection A, to discuss disability retirement actions for police department personnel, and including an invitation into the executive session for Chief Baldwin, Deputy Chief Barone, and the HR Director Denise Karpewski. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the record, it's 6:39. Okay. First thing I need to do is, I need to come back into open session, so I'll entertain a motion to reopen the meeting, it is 7:14 P.M.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, and second by Commissioner Young. Are there, all in favor, excuse me?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going to move into item six, and I'm looking for a motion from the floor, do I have a motion?
Okay, I move to approve the disability pension of the police contract under Article 24, Section 10, for Officer Robert Simons, effective November 7th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, this Commissioner Battle, second by Commissioner Benedetto, are there questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention for the record would be Commissioner McLeod. So this motion passes. All right, we can move into item seven. I'll entertain a motion to award the purchase of the 2025 Polaris Ranger XP 1000 4x4 utility vehicle with lighting package to Chaves Brothers Management LLC of Boca Raton, Florida, in the amount of $41,426.99. The funding for this purchase will be paid through the opioid settlement fund, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated October 18th, 2024. And this has already been approved by the city council. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Young. And questions?
This is on a grant, correct? The opiate grant?
Yes, it is, it's coming out of that fund.
I just had a question, we had to go out to Florida to get bids, is that the only company that bid?
We had two bids, and that was the only company, or we put it off for several bids, and that was the only company that came in with the bid with the specs that we asked for.
I think the only thing that I would add is the opioid settlement funds is not a grant, but the lawsuit, class action lawsuit that was brought against the opioid manufacturers and distributors resulted in funds that come to the city of Torrington over the next 18 years. So it is through that. I would also just add that the reason we were focused on this vehicle is, as all of you know, with considerable trail work and state forests, state parks, and city parks, quite frequently, a response, a medical response off-road would require special equipment. So we did feel that this would suffice in any of those responses.
Chief, there's heat and air conditioning in this? No, well, some of them have, that's why I ask. Boy, that's gonna be cold in the winter.
All right, if there are no other questions, then I'm going to call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries. Moving into eight, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the fleet manager and purchasing agent to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the purchase of three ToughBook computer systems from Tel Repco of Wallingford in the amount of $20,512.50, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated October 30th, 2024. This one is pending council approval. So.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner Cogswell. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion, again, on the recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board and the fleet manager to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the purchase of one Silverado Short Crew Cab 4x4 from Sullivan Northwest Hills, Torrington, Connecticut, in the amount of $72,722.23, that's a lot of twos, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated October 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod, and again, this is pending council approval. Questions or comments?
Chief, I've seen his traffic vehicle, and he's due.
Other questions? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's report for September 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner Cogswell. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? No questions?
Aye.
Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept Fire Chief Borden's reports for September 24.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments?
Geez. Excuse me, guys, just a little bit more, can we get a little bit more in the report on, you know, like, what you tended to school for and the reason? You know, just a little more detail than just the line items. So like, you tended professional development for, you know? Just a little more detail on that, if that's okay? Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to accept the EMS provider activity reports, September 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, second by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the Board of Public Safety Policy Subcommittee.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table, just before I do, though, we did meet recently to talk about lockouts and policy, and also pumpouts, there was no action, nothing before, the board at this point, but just want to let you know, there was a recent meeting, we'll continue those conversations, among others. But for now, I would ask for a motion to table.
All right, you have a motion to table, do you have a second?
Okay.
And a second, so motion to table, like Commissioner Cogswell, second by Commissioner McElroy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move right into item 14. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the volunteer fire departments.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Battle, and second by Commissioner Benedetto. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner, I see. Chief Kalanowski is in the room.
Good evening, everybody. So for the month of October, we were dispatched to six calls for service, we made five of those. One of the calls, just for context, we were canceled prior to any of our officers signing on, so that was not logged. We have completed 55 and a half hours of cumulative training for that month, for the month of October. We also completed a roof project on our utility shed in the rear, which was done in-house at no additional cost to the taxpayers funded through our budget. And I also did want to take a moment to talk a little bit about the brush fire readiness kind of plan that we have put in place at Drakeville with the, you know, extreme weather that we've been having. So we did take a moment to refresh all of our members on training on that, as well as familiarity with the trucks and familiarity with our response area, which includes a lot of the rural, difficult-to-access areas. That's proven itself, just last week, we responded along with Torrington to assist them at a combine fire, which we were able to deliver some much-needed water to them just in the nick of time. So thank you to Torrington for dispatching us and allowing us to assist them there. We also, obviously, were involved in the brush fire operation at Sunnybrook over the last couple of days. So that was completed based on our, we had eight, we had eight members respond to that, all three apparatus also responded to that, our brush tanker, as well as our engine. And we also provided some standby coverage the following day as well.
Thank you, any questions for?
So did you guys work the fire, or just were there on standby?
I personally didn't, but my crew was there, I was standing by with the tanker. I think we were set up to do a water shell with the units that were unseen. But our brush truck was in there, as well as our manpower as well.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, I know we're a little.
Too.
Thank you.
Everyone. I just do want to mention that we are, Torrington also did assist at the Sunnybrook fire. They had five people with brush equipment there. We did have a little bit of a delayed response to that call because of all the confusion with the radio transmissions and stuff, but they did end up getting there about 45 minutes after the initial call, once they figured out what was going on. Did have a couple of fire police available to help with traffic, but they were never dispatched for assistance. And also during that period, the career department had to borrow our engines for a few hours, while I think a couple of their trucks were broke down, so. And then the next day, two of our guys went with our engine back up there for water supply and spent 10 hours there the next day helping with the water supply. We are still struggling for members, as you all know. Right now, we have seven firefighters, one cadet, six fire police. We just got three new applicants within the last three weeks. We won't be comfortable until we have at least another eight to 10 more people. We just feel that we need that many to be able to to help the way I think we're expected to. We have been doing, you might have seen lawn signs out, posters are up, we're starting a social media advertising within the next week. Instead of sending out a fun drive letter this year, which is going to hurt us financially, we're doing a membership letter drive in both English and Spanish, hoping to bring in more people that the career department can hire in the future.
Can I ask you a question on your fire police? Yeah. So when are they dispatched? Is it takes the job of a police officer? The block a road, is that how you dispatch them, chief?
Typically, the police, the fire department doesn't, they, anything that has to do with road closures or help with road, they send it over to the police department. So it's really, for us to get dispatched, it has to be at the request of the police department, I guess. In most cases, in most cases.
So chief, so they utilize them so not to tie up an officer, correct?
Yes, we do, yeah.
So that Newfield Fire was a two-day thing? Did they, why weren't they called? Did you have an officer blocking the road, or no?
We only had the officer there during.
Oh, so Newfield Road was open?
Yeah, just during the initial event, we had an officer there for traffic.
Just curious who dispatches you?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right, let's move into item 15, I will entertain a motion to consider business by the department.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Cogswell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Chief Baldwin, anything else to say?
Just very briefly, we hired two officers on October 17th. They are now in the New Britain Academy, the Post Academy, they're expected to graduate in April of '25. We have a total of four people in the academy right now. We have a net gain of two, so we're down 12 from 14. We continue to do interviews on a regular basis as applicants become available through our testing process. We work with HR and we do immediate interviews as soon as we possibly can to get qualified applicants, and conditional offers are given, then the backgrounds are conducted, and we hope that they pass the backgrounds and that they can move forward with the process. As the, there were no issues yesterday at the polling sites. I received an excellent compliment on one of my officers who worked the polling site, helping the Hispanic community with interpretation, and he went above and beyond, that was Officer Toledo. And I just want to praise him and thank him for the excellent job that he did. Carol Anderson made it very clear to me that he was an exceptional asset to the event that occurred yesterday, so. And that's just the type of guy that Officer Toledo is, he didn't have to do what he was doing, but he went above and beyond, so kudos to him. I've been working with our HR person, and she's informed me that they're in process now of a social worker. The conditional officer was given to a social worker for the city, and we're just one commissioner. Yeah, so you can talk to the mayor about additional ones. And that's in process, so that's moving to your question last month. And then we had a drug takeback back on October 26th, and we collected 78.7, almost 79 pounds of prescription takeback, which seems to be the average over the last, that's done biannually, as you're aware. And 78, 79 pounds is considered successful, so that's all I got.
Any questions for the chief? No?
Not a question, I just wanted to add on to what you said about police officer at whatever polling place, I'm not sure which one it was. I was at the Armory all day, you know, for like 14 hours. And I'm going to say that, and I made sure I told them, that every police officer that worked that day was way beyond the call of what they had to do that day. There was zero problems with, there was one at the end of any person whatsoever, and there should have been. It was insane. And really, they did an amazing job, they did an amazing job. I need to digress for the one problem we had, because it was funny. He wasn't allowed to vote, because he was in the wrong place, and it was eight o'clock. So he is screaming at, I think, Jack Johnson. So Captain Johnson got in the conversation. "I'm a veteran, and I'm a Marine from, and I was in Iraq two times," and immediately Captain Johnson goes, "Well, so was I." Bing, 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 what unit, and they went back and forth about 10, 15 minutes. And he had, Johnson had every answer for this guy, and they went out arm-in-arm with Jock and him, and that was it, the whole thing was gone, and like, it's 8:30 about this time, we're going, no, we don't need this at all, and it was.
Called de-escalation.
You know, it was perfect, you know?
It was a good story.
We did pick up, you know, Captain.
Same thing at Torrington School, Dan, was, he was fantastic up there. He wouldn't even take a cookie, offer him a cookie. A cookie, he wouldn't take it.
Yeah, I know Officer Gallagher also came in, somebody was blocking the gateway to the cemetery, so he came in to see if he could track them down, and when he saw the line for same-day registration, he did ask if the coworkers felt they needed him to stay, and he did. So I think all in all, we all saw a little bit of that extra that the police department has offered during this. All right, no questions for the chief, deputy chief, anything? You're good, Chief Borden?
Just have a few items. We are starting the process of looking at new recruits for the Spring Fire Academy class. We have a list that is ongoing now, so we have to look at the people that we interviewed and make sure the depth is what we need, and if so, we'll have to conduct further interviews to bolster it out a little bit. But we're in the process of that, I met with the mayor on Tuesday, discussed the financial side of it, because our budget kind of got cut a little bit of what we were anticipating for five to go to the academy, so by looking at not having to make salary payments and stuff like that, that we should be okay moving in to the academy to get them through fiscal year next year. Tomorrow night, the Elks is doing their award ceremony for first responders, and we put forth Lieutenant Chisonic for a notorious service award for all that he does for the department, including the radios with the grant that came through, did a tremendous amount of behind-the-scenes work and meeting with people and trying to get a lot of things done, so very deserving of that. During the election yesterday, we assembled two teams, one during the morning and one during the afternoon and the evening for hazmat response for the region, and we worked with the regional assets and with Danbury Fire Department in case something happened, because there were a lot of undocumented threats that were being made, so they wanted to be prepared in case something happened. So we did that, and then today, we responded mutually to New Hartford for another hazardous materials incident involving a propane tank and helped mitigate that. As we all know, the brush fire, both myself and Deputy Chief Tripp were not there. I have to shoulder that responsibility for that, because I had a family friend, a very close one, his mom passed away on Friday, and my head was kind of wrapped up on that, and I forgot about having adequate coverage with Dave not being in the city as well. So I have, that's my fault on that, but we did have two battalion chiefs. in the city as well. So I have, that's my fault on that. But we did have two battalion chiefs there and, um, it was state property. So the DEP quickly took over and everything. So we just provided resources for them. But any blame for, um, a lack of chief presence for Torrington falls on my shoulders. So that's all I have.
Chief, I, I got a question on that. When, when you and a deputy, first off, is there a policy that if one's out, the other one can't be out of town? I mean.
I don't believe there's a written policy, but I mean. We try to, we try to maintain that. And, um, in this particular case, it was totally an oversight on my part. And that's why I said I should have the responsibility for it because I knew he was away. But my head was somewhere else because they were very close to me. And, and I'm not making an excuse for that. It's just that I should have put somebody else in charge in my absence.
So how's the ranking work? So the fire marshal, the next one in line?
Typically, we use, uh, Ed Bessette on next.
Yeah, and then it goes down.
I'll show be, and then yes, or battalion chief if need be.
So did anybody step up to fill that role?
Um, I.
What they didn't hear from you guys?
Say formally, anybody did, but, um, the, like I said, we had two battalion chiefs on scene that were, uh, in control of the situation and were getting the right resources. And then I received, and I think it was about an hour into the incident, um, a phone call from one of the commissioners because, um, I wasn't aware that the incident was even occurring. They didn't get the notification. So, uh, that's something else that we addressed today was making sure the notifications are going out. Um, I think.
So accountability would go on one of those battalion chiefs?
Yes.
If something went wrong.
Yeah. In, in our absence, yeah, there's one of them there to do. That's why we have, you know, in every incident we go to, uh, of any significance, we always have an incident commander who's in charge and running everything. But obviously, we want to bring in Beckville resources to help him or her on the scene, uh, so that they don't have to take care of everything. That's how the, the system works for incident command.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, yeah, I was just going to say, um, obviously where both of you were, you know, i- is understandable and I don't have any question about that at all. The only thing that was concerning me that day, um, of course, not knowing what either was, that we have been having the question for quite a while about um, communication. So it was just again, you know, I understand the circumstances and accept, you know, you, you accepting that. Um, but that was my problem was that was the communication part of it. Um, and I also, I, I really don't like bringing this up, but I've, I've got to do it when it comes to communication. I got an email. And, uh, I never received one from this gentleman before ever. He left, he left the fire department. He, for another job. And his email said that he, um, had emailed you three times and the deputy twice before he left. Never received any response whatsoever before he left. So I wanted to verify that if that, you know, if there, if he had had any contact.
Well, I can tell you it was twice that he addressed me and I believe, uh, Deputy Chief. But, um, however, on both occasions, we made appointments to meet with him and.
I'm sorry, chief, I can't, I can't hear you.
We made arrangements to meet with him before he left, uh, Torrington and he called out sick on both. So we weren't able to get together with him. I can't make him come to work. Uh, we made ourselves available, but, uh, we were aware of the situation. I don't know why that was blown into that direction.
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna read what I, what I was sent to, okay? And, and he did say that he had taken down his email, company email, the day he left. So we didn't know if something came after that. And, you know, of course I asked that, you know, and, um, then I was told that I thought it was pretty blank poor, but was just another reason to add to the list of why I wanted to leave. That's disturbing to me. That's, that's all I'm going to say. We, we're having a hard enough time keeping people. That's disturbing to me.
There's a lot of other circumstances to go on with that that I'm not going to discuss in this forum, but.
I, I, you know, I'm just getting what I get.
I totally understand. And my answer to that is.
And I never, we didn't even know the guy, you know, I, but I got that, you know? Um, I have one other question, though. It's got nothing to do with this. And I know we, when we get our dispatches, the LCD, it is what it is. But we got last Saturday fourteen illegal burnings, which I'm watching it going, you guys are going crazy because I think you're up twenty times in the course of twenty-four hours.
Today was another day.
Are we making any money off of this?
No.
If they are illegal burnings?
Um, i- if they're truly illegal burnings on private property or something like that, then yes, we have, um, a thing. But when it comes in as illegal burning today, I'll give you an example. We went to, like, over a handful of them, which were in the parking lots of Big Y, Target, et cetera. We don't know who started it. We don't know who's responsible for it. There's no way to go after them.
And I, and I know it's a very generic.
Else discarded something.
It's generic and I, I understand that, but I wanted to ask that question.
Yeah. So, but if somebody were, you know, to disregard the, um, ban on open burning in their backyard, that's a little bit different story. And that's something that we couldn't enforce.
I, I was very sympathetic. I'm looking at this, you know, first of all, I wanted to get rid of my phone because it just kept going off every ten minutes.
It's trial there. Very dry.
Other questions for chief? Deputy Chief, anything?
I have nothing, Mayor. Can I? Thank you.
All right. Anything from Trinity? Jeff? Nothing? All right, then we'll move into, uh, item sixteen. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Coxwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll start from, um, my right. Anything this evening, Commissioner Young?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McElroy. Uh, Commissioner Benedetto?
Well, just one thing for the dev, um, trucks, any issues? I, I forget to ask you on your report because we didn't kind of talk to you about your report. And it was nothing in your report, so I figured I'd ask.
So not surprising, truck one again.
Oh.
Um, yeah, they discovered, actually it was, it was group one that discovered it. Um, it was start up, they're, they're doing their, their check. After forty-five seconds, the thing just shut down. And they've rebooted it, restarted it. Same thing happened. So they called the street department, equipment maintenance. And they said, we're not driving it down there. Well, they drove it down there and it happened to them driving down there. So it's deadlined. Um, for Dan with Rosenbauer, I'm not sure what they're doing, but, um, so that's out of service. Engine three, at the same time, we had an issue with engine three, um, with the steamer and stuff. So that's down there because of equipment and other issues. That's why we had to call Torringford to bail us out one more time with engine seventeen. It happens four times a year that we need seventeen. So.
Are we slated for a new truck soon?
April.
April. Maybe might need to push it up.
I can't. It's on the line in January.
That's even pushed up. There's an open.
No, it's.
What they have said.
So E one, this is an issue with E one nationally, um, in the vendors. So our truck was actually supposed to be last June. And they told us October. Then as we're approaching, E one had a big meeting with all the, and then it was pushed up. They said, well, we're going to get it early. And then E one had a big meeting with all their distributors and they said, yeah, well, it's our bad. We're six months behind. So I went from October to April. Yeah. So we're still slotted on the line. I talked to them last week, see where we are. And January, we're slotted to be online and things are starting to move pretty good at E one.
Are we wearing them out running these EMS calls? Is that putting the wear into these trucks?
No.
No?
There's, there's bigger departments than us like Manchester. They run fifteen thousand EMS calls. And they, all they do is transfer a paramedic. The paramedics have their engines, they drop them off. So they're running a lot more miles than we are here. Um, and, and we're not running everything. We're just running the, you know, the majors to help out, help out our community.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry, that's your, those are your comments.
No, um, that's it.
That's it?
Oh, nice job on, I'm sorry, I just dressed the fire department for the job that you guys did at that, that brush fire. And the volunteers for, for showing up and staying there for two days. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coxwell.
Uh, thank you. I just want to say the same. Uh, thank you to all the members of Torrington Fire Department and our volunteers for the work they did that thankfully didn't get much bigger. And I think I, uh, everyone would agree, let's get some meaningful rain soon. So we don't have to keep worrying about this because it obviously is a drain on our resources and I think we're quite lucky so far and I don't want to jinx us, but that we haven't had more of these issues. Thank you again for all those efforts.
Commissioner McLeod.
I'm just going to repeat the same thing, but I, I would also like to, uh, congratulate Detective, uh, Joe Amino for her award. Um, I walked in with her and, you know, she, she was pretty happy and I think then tomorrow night too, I guess she gets, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes. Once again, um, yes. Um, for, for everyone and all their work that they were doing for a flyer and for the community, we're always, um, definitely excited to hear about the work that our department does. And we're both departments, we're proud. Volunteers also, thank you. Um, skin Thanksgiving, in case we don't see each other. That's it. Thank you.
All right, there being no further business before the board, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting so we could open the next.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Let's go right into, uh, the Board of Trustees. Um, so for the, uh, record, this is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund. Uh, it is still Wednesday, November sixth, twenty twenty-four. It is seven forty-five PM. Uh, and we do have a full, um, a, a full board present and attending, uh, uh, this evening. Um.
We got policing.
Police on Zoom.
Okay.
And our fire.
Guys, we have to start a meeting. Late night last night.
I know. Or an early morning. So it's November sixth, and I just want to make a comment about the shorts and flip flops. Okay.
Full clothes.
So, uh, as I said, yeah. Uh, we do have the full board of representing the fire department. I have, um, uh, Board of Trustees member, um, Sterling and Delisle, uh, representing the police department. We have, um, Officer Littieri and Foley. Uh, the city treasurer, Dan Farley is here and, uh, our Board of Safety members. Um, Commissioner Young, Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner Coxwell, Commissioner McLeod and Commissioner Battle. I'm fading fast, as you can tell. So, um, I'm going to jump right in. Um, the first, uh, item on the agenda. I would actually ask for a motion to table, item number one. Uh, this is for the pension computation for Robert Simon. Uh, Mar.
Table.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Coxwell, second by Commissioner Benedetto. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. We'll move right into item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective February second, twenty twenty-three for Bart Barone, the third captain for the City of Torrington Police Department after twenty-five years of service.
Yeah. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
So I heard McLeod. I heard, uh, Benedetto. Uh, questions or comments on the capi, capi, calculation for this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four for Justin Delloy, patrolman, A for the City of Torrington Police Department after twenty-five years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the revised pension calculation and retroactive pay effective April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four for Brian Fox, patrolman for the City of Torrington Police Department after ten, wait, zero, one years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Young. Questions or comments on the calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving into, uh, Board of Trustees, uh, for IAF, IAFF Council fifteen, Local fifteen sixty-seven. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension co- calculation effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four for Lori Pepler, surviving spouse of Chris Pepler, deputy fire chief for the City of Torrington Fire Department. After eighteen twenty-three, eighteen point two-three years of service, uh, I heard motion by Commissioner Battle.
Second.
Uh, a second by Commissioner Benedetto. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for David Tripp, deputy fire chief of the City of Torrington after twenty-eight point two-five years of service.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, second by Commissioner Coxwell. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McElroy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.